Sure. Thank you. Lights on. You guys ready? Ready?
Yes.
Ready? Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. The regular Board meeting for Socorro ISD will not begin. It is 6:01. Today's pledge of allegiance will be led by Valerie Elmo Cio, Senior, Eldorado High School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's go to item number three, superintendent comments. Not sure why... There you go. I was like, "I'm not sure why the lights are off." Maybe because tough loss by the Cowboys. I had to say that.
Says a Houston fan.
No. That was not planned, by the way. President Gandara, members of the board this evening, we are welcoming two new leaders to our elite leadership team. As I call your name, please stand to be recognized. Ms. Phyllis Sully is our new Assistant Principal of Purple Heart Elementary. And Ms. Yvonne Romero is our new Assistant Principal of James Butler Elementary. Congratulations. We know you'll both do a great job at your schools. Congratulations. I'm also extremely proud to announce that for the second year in a row, Socorro ISD has been named a finalist for the HEB Excellence in Education Award. And for being a finalist, our district will receive $5,000 for the award. Now, HEB judges, just like last year, they'll be coming to Socorro ISD to conduct a site visit on February 20th, and will visit a couple of our awesome campuses, and also meet with a group of SISD stakeholders to get more input on our success. So, I want to acknowledge all the hard work of our students, our teachers, our parents, our leaders, and our board members, which has earned our district this prestigious, prestigious honor for two years in a row. Congratulations, Team SISD. I also want to congratulate Americas High School and Eastlake High School for being selected as a finalist in the 2017... In the 2017 Americas Best Urban Schools Award by the National Center for Urban School Transformation. And out of 32 schools in the country, not El Paso, not the state, in the country, out of 32 schools in the country, Socorro ISD has two campuses that were selected for this prestigious award. So, congratulations to our Trail Blazers and Falcons. Job well done. Also, want to congratulate our awesome Counseling Department for having 17 counseling programs in our district, received the first-ever Lone Star Counselor Award. There were only 37 counselor awards given across the state, and Socorro ISD earned almost half of them, 17. And I know we have several counselors with us today, so enjoy the spotlight, Team SISD counselors, for this well, well-deserved award. Congratulations. And President Gandara, that concludes my comments.
Let's go down now to item number four, Board Honors. Daniel Escobar.
Good evening, President Gandara, members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Espinoza. My name is Daniel Escobar, Chief Communications Officer for the district, and it is my pleasure to introduce tonight's recognitions. If you'll please step down to receive our honorees. Our first recognition will honor two varsity football teams for showing incredible athletic talent, sportsmanship, and winning a share of the 2016 District 168 Championship. First, we will recognize the Eldorado High School Varsity Football Team, who had an outstanding season and finished with an overall record of 9-3, and a district record of 7-1. The Aztecs earned back-to-back district titles, and their offense was ranked top 10 in Texas and top 25 nationally. The Aztecs also had numerous athletes advance to the First Team All-City Selections, First Team All-District Selections, Academic All-District Selections, as well as a Senior All-Star Team. Congratulations to the championship Aztecs. They are Arturo Velez, Gianni Caraveo, Tyler Jones, Cameron Hill, Josh Ramirez, Jonathan Zarate, Keyshawn Watson, George Hernandez, Kevin Henderson, Alex Retana, Salvador Avila, Zyric Bermudez, Christian Gonzalez, Seth Davis, Andres Rios, Jeremiah Moreno, Leif Eric Chafay, Ricky Tuyaloo Luu, Willie Crosslin, Eric Gardea, Ken Johnson, Ernie Espinoza, Josh Ray, Felipe Quintero, Cody Gilmore, Nicholas Tipton, Dante Gavillanes. Assistant coaches are Tommy Ojaca, Eddie Lopez, Will Montano, Victor Rodriguez, Tony Isa, Rudy Valdez, Mitch Taylor, Danny Seines, Mike Harris, Sean Rozlosnik is our defensive coordinator. Assistant head coach is Phil Barrios. Also, Ray Bautista. And they are led by head coach Ruben Torres. If we can have you all please return to the front for a photo with our board and superintendent. Just a quick note as we're gathering and getting ready for the photo, that the portraits taken by our district photographer, Mr. Largo, will be posted on the district website. There is a photo icon on the bottom right-hand corner to our SmugMug account, and those photos are available for free high-resolution download. All right, congratulations once again. Next, we will recognize the Montwood High School Varsity Football Team, who also finished the season with great success, earning a record of 7-4 and a district record of 6-1. The Rams won the 168 district title with five athletes advancing to the All-Star Selections. In addition, Coach Ariel Famalijy was named 168 Coach of the Year. Congratulations to these championship Rams. They are Andrew Fernandez, Alex Rodriguez, Duri Zepeda, Edward Garibey, Neo Rodriguez, Chris Martinez, Abraham Perez, Evan Deanda, Eloy Serna, Alex Mendez, Jonathan Lopez, Gerardo Chin, Oscar Luna, Dominic Rojas, Esteban Castañeda, Carlos Rocha. Assistant coaches are David Portillo, Joe Ruiz, Sam Villarreal, Pete Perez, Mike Sherman, Fernando Cortez. Defensive coordinator is John Villarreal. Offensive coordinator, David Teas. And again, they're led by 168 Coach of the Year, Ariel Famalijy. Congratulations once again. We have two special presentations this evening to recognize Team SISD employees and leaders for going above and beyond to earn professional achievements and being advocates for Team SISD schools and children. We will start by recognizing SISD school counseling teams for their extraordinary dedication to students and winning the first-ever Lone Star State School Counselor Association Award. As Dr. Espinoza mentioned earlier, the Lone Star State Award recognizes effective and outstanding school counseling programs in the state of Texas that advocate for students. There were only 37 counseling programs across the state of Texas to receive this award, and again, 17 were from Team SISD. Congratulations to all of our counselors for earning this prestigious award. We'll begin recognizing the team from Americas High School. We have Sylvia Cox, Joanne Curtly, Aida Mata, Elizabeth Figueroa, Arturo Chavira, Sandra Yamas, and Vanessa Rendon. From Eldorado High School, Sonia Ugarte Gil, Sylvia Gonzalez, Guillermo Herrera, Mary Golden, Claudia Preciado, David Wyndham, and Alma Dominguez Barrios. From Montwood High School, Annette Monsivayas, Liz Revelis, Adriana Martinez, Gabriela Shimshak, and Nancy Priego. From Socorro High School, Linda Misque, Connie Campos Reyes, and Chrissy Matamoros. From Hernando Middle School, Iris Para, and Mireia Reyes. From Sanchez Middle School, Monica Dominguez, from Slider Middle School, Claudia Butler, and Josie Porras. From Sunridge Middle, Zulema Dickerson, Jennifer Garcia, and Aida Vasquez. From Desert Wind School, Sarah Castillo, from Paso del Norte School, Christina Núñez, and Joe Jennifer Chabra. From Butler Elementary, Jennifer Madrid, and Rosa Rodríguez. From Campestre Elementary, Angie Morales. From Escondrias Elementary, Enrique Vieramontes. From Helen Ball Elementary, Maria Washington, and Evelyn García. From Roberto Eduardo, Melissa Galvez, and Raquel Fraga. From Chester Jordan Elementary, Yvette Martinez, and from Visa de Sol Elementary, Georgina Shindo. Congratulations once again to all of these award-winning counseling teams. If we can please have you all return to the front for a photo. You got everybody in frame? So, just look straight forward and keep smiling. Keep smiling, keep smiling. Congratulations once again. Actually, trustees, Dr. Espinoza, if you'll be seated for our final presentation. Yes, please. Our final recognition this evening is a special tribute to the All-Stars of Team SISD. The individuals whose contributions, leadership, and support have guided our district to achieve excellence and high levels of unprecedented success. In honor of School Board Recognition Month, SISD schools displayed thank-you messages on their marquees and shared countless posts on social media thanking our amazing trustees for their tireless work and commitment to Team SISD schools and our children. Tonight, we would like to continue that special recognition to show you how much we appreciate your service to our community. As advocates for public schools, you ensure that decisions directly affecting our schools have a positive impact in the lives of every student. Students agree that our board members go above and beyond to ensure Team SISD offers unique programs and endless opportunities for students, and have created a proclamation video to say thank you for your efforts.
Whereas the Socorro ISD Board of Trustees is instrumental to our vision of academic excellence.
Entering us, the students, as if we were your own children. All those in favor say aye.
Whereas Socorro ISD Board of Trustees are strong advocates for public education.
And are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations.
All those in favor say aye.
Whereas the Socorro ISD Board of Trustees monitor organizational culture, legal and legislative trends, as well as ethical and social responsibilities.
All those in favor say aye.
Whereas Socorro ISD Board of Trustees work together as a team to meet the diverse educational needs of all students.
And help to provide us with endless opportunities for all of us to succeed.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
For a Socorro ISD Board of Trustees is an important part of district leadership.
And is vital for the overall productivity and efficiency of the district.
All those in favor say aye.
Whereas the Socorro ISD Board of Trustees is a valued, respected, and award-winning governing body.
That is leading, inspiring, and innovating to achieve the vision of tomorrow's leaders learning today.
All those in favor say aye.
Be it resolved that we, the students, faculty, staff, and administration.
Hereby proclaim January as School Board Recognition Month, in honor of your unwavering leadership, service, and dedication to Team SISD.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye!
In addition to the video, students from across the district drew portraits of each board member and wrote heartwarming letters explaining why our school board members are the most valuable players of Team SISD. On your desk, you will find your own personal pack of All-Star cards with drawings and words of thanks from the children you serve. One of the notes from a second-grade student at Loma Verde said, "Thank you for caring for all students at SISD and working hard. You are awesome, and even if the work is difficult, you do it for the students." Another student, who is a fifth grader at Visa de Sola, expressed how grateful he is for the leadership of our SISD school board. He said, "I give you thanks because you authorize all these amazing things we have as students, such as a warm school, food, a fun playground, lots of technology, and much, much more." Also, on behalf of Team SISD employees at the campuses across the district, we hope you enjoy the goodie baskets that are on the table to your left or the audience's right, filled with school spirit items and special gifts of thanks from schools throughout the district. Lastly, Dr. Espinoza and the cabinet had some special portraits displaying your championship leadership professionally framed as an emblem of our gratitude for making Team SISD the District of Champions. The portraits were drawn by students at Sunridge Middle School under the direction of teacher Gabriel Aragon, then adapted by Team SISD graphic artist. I will introduce each student who is here to present to you with the portraits that they drew. Board of Trustees and Dr. Espinoza, when I call your name, if you'll please step down to receive. And Ms. Nakata, I will ask if you'll please receive on behalf of Ms. Rodríguez, when we're at that point. So presenting to Board President, Mr. Gary Gandara, is Lupita Ramírez. And as our champions, they are being presented with their personal Wheaties, Wheaties box cover photo, again, as depicted by the student artists. Presenting to Board Vice President, Paul Guerra, is Andrea Silva. Presenting to Board Secretary, Ms. Cynthia Nakata, is Melanie Samala. Presenting to Board Trustee, Hector Gonzalez, again Andrea Silva. Presenting to Board Trustee, Mr. Michael Nakata, is Giovanna Rivera. Presenting the frame, on behalf of Ms. Angelica Rodríguez, is Kylie Noel. Presenting to Board Trustee, Mr. Tony Ayub, is Melanie Samala. And completing our team of eight, presenting to Superintendent, Dr. Espinoza, Mariana Contreras. If we could have you all, please join us, come to the front for a photo. And there will be joined by campus principal, Mr. Astorga, as well as their teacher, Mr. Aragon. Let's have one more round of applause for our amazing student artists. And again, thank you so much to all of our trustees for your invaluable contributions to the success of all Team SISD. And that concludes our recognitions for this evening.
Okay, let's go down to item number six. Board of Trustees Business, Consider Approval of National School Counselor Week Proclamation, Ms. Tammy McCabon.
Good evening, President Gandara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the board. Each year, SISD celebrates National School Counselor Week, sponsored by the American School Counselors Association during the month of February. This year, National School Counselor Week is February 6th through 10th. During this time, we celebrate the vital role school counselors play in academic, social-emotional, and career success for SISD students. This evening, we have Jackie DeCina, sixth grader at Sanchez Middle School, who will be reading the proclamation for National School Counselor Week.
Proclamation. Whereas school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential, and whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, talents, and talents, as these traits relate to career awareness development, and whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children, and whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and realistic goals for themselves, and whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs, and help students become more productive members of society, and whereas comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. Therefore, we do hereby proclaim February 6th through 10th, 2017, as National School Counselor Week.
Members of the board, we ask that you accept the proclamation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Nakata, second by Mr. Nakata. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Nakata. Let's go down to item 6B, Consider Approval Resolution Supporting Public Schools, Ms. Veronica Hernandez.
Good evening, President Gandara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the board. My name is Veronica Hernandez, and I serve as president of the Socorro AFD, American Federation of Teachers. On behalf of the Socorro American Federation of Teachers and myself, we want to express our gratitude for the vital work that you do, for your willingness, time, and dedication to serve on the SISD board. I come before you tonight to urge you to join with school boards across the nation and adopt the resolution being presented to you tonight to show your support for the protection of our students, our schools, and our communities. I'd also like to invite each and every one of you to join us, to join all the students, the community members, our political leaders, parents, and teachers at Waco Elementary School on Thursday, January 19th, at 9:30 a.m., as we pledge our support by joining hands around the school, showing our commitment to public education as part of our National Day of Action. Now, I would like to present Israel Pérez, student council member from Eastlake High School, Lily Pérez, student council member from Enser Middle School, and Abraham Rivas, who will present the resolution to you for signatures, to read the resolution. Thank you, I urge your approval.
Resolution Supporting Public Schools. Whereas free public schools available to every child regardless of income, ability, need, English language proficiency, or racial and ethnic identity are keystones in the foundation of our American democracy. And whereas our public schools prepare the nation's young people, rich, poor, and of all abilities to contribute to our nation's society, economy, and civic life. And whereas all students deserve high-quality public schools that teach the whole child, providing enrichment, and addressing social and emotional needs in addition to core academic subjects. And whereas Socorro ISD residents expect their elected leaders and policymakers regardless of political party affiliation to value and support this vision for a strong and inclusive public education system. And whereas local accountability for our public schools is necessary to ensure that schools are responsive to the needs of their communities.
Whereas ninety percent of all American children attend and depend on public schools for their chance to succeed and achieve the American dream. Whereas education policies such as voucher programs diminish the resources needed by traditional public schools to provide the safe and nurturing learning environment that all students deserve in an education system offering fairness and opportunity for all children. Now therefore, for these reasons and many others, be it resolved that the Socorro ISD School Board supports public education in our community that is high-quality, inclusive, and supported with resources that are adequate for its essential responsibility of helping all children achieve, succeed, and mature into good citizens who contribute to America's economy, social well-being, and the civic life of our democracy. And that the Socorro ISD School Board rejects policies that privatize school operations and undermine local control and accountability for all of our publicly funded schools.
Thank you, we urge your adoption, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made. Mr. Ayub, and second by Mr. Nakata. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, sir.
If I may, I do support the public schools all throughout the nation. And it comes in front of this board a resolution, its claim is to be in support of the public schools. I have read it and agree with all of the premises contained in this document. However, this conclusion is not supported by the premises. The resolution omits that there are failing schools and failing school districts throughout the state, that the students across the state will suffer at those schools when they fail them. The failure will be a catalyst that diminishes their future success. Denying the parents the right to choose the best educational experience harms not only the family, but the student. The student that will be deprived of an equal playing field to succeed in our country. SISD is a clear example that through our leadership, we inspire the students and promote innovation that will open new doors, excuse me, new doors in a brand-new world. This is what this district and all districts should be in business for. If we see new schools propose or operational, this does not mean that SISD, we fail our students. Rather, I welcome the competition for it will provide not only a better education, but a more equitable experience. Competition sharpens our skills as leaders and innovators with the added incentive that this experience will further allow us to inspire future development. Ours is a changing world, and we at SISD are ready to meet the challenge. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Best school board. All those in favor say aye!
Aye!
Thank you so much.
Thank you, great job.
Great job.
Okay, let's go down to item seven, Open Forum. We do have a few people that did sign up. We greatly appreciate those individuals who have requested to speak to the board in regards to a specific agenda item. We are bound by a certain time constraint in order to cover all the items on the agenda, and therefore must limit presentations to five minutes. Please respect the rights of others in your presentation. By law, the board cannot take action upon or discuss any item which is not posted on tonight's agenda, but will give all presentations our serious consideration. Thank you, let's proceed. First, we have Ms. Ann Darnell.
Good evening, President Gandara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the board. Tonight, I'd like to present Wells Fargo, who has generously contributed to our Win Academy Grant, and Christine Gallegos, Vice President and District Manager of El Paso Markets, and Cesar Apadaca are here, who is Branch Manager for our Montwood Branch, are here to present a check.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent of Schools and Community. On behalf of Wells Fargo, we want to present the Socorro Independent School District's Win Academy with a check for $5,000.
Wells Fargo invests in our community, especially where our team members and our customers live and work. As an example, my granddaughter's going to build a cyber elementary school, I believe you're... So, thank you very much for your time. So, so thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Gandara, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the Board. Tonight, we show our appreciation of the Socorro Independent School District School Board. Socorro Education Association is donating $500 to the Dr. Barber Scholarship Fund to honor outstanding, our outstanding Board. As you know, that scholarship is for future teachers, so we, we can have great teachers here. Our School Board goes above and beyond in all they do and accomplish for all SISD students and employees. We appreciate your professionalism, transparency, fairness, caring, compassion, and willingness to listen to all stakeholders of the district. We are indeed fortunate to have such a high-functioning School Board and applaud all its efforts and accomplishments for, to make SISD the best district. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Letitia Favela de Quezada.
Buenas noches, Presidente Gandara, Doctor Espinoza, and members de la Mesa Directiva. Okay, en nuestra, hoy estamos aquí, nosotros venimos, no, venimos a aclarar una cosa, no, no estamos en contra de la escuela ni denigrando ninguna escuela, okay? No estamos en contra ni de los maestros, ni de la misma escuela, estamos en contra de la manera que se está llevando la administración de la escuela. Hemos recaudado quinientas firmas, no sé cuántas más necesiten, para poder hacer algo. Necesitamos una persona fuerte que esté en la escuela, que ayude a los muchachos. Sabemos que empezó el problema en el 2015, 2016, cuando los niños de Sparks se fueron hacia allá. Es intend, es entendible porque los niños de allá crecieron juntos. Entonces van otra, otros niños de esta parte, obvio, va a haber problemas. Y los problemas son peleas. Muchos niños se juntan todos juntos para poder ir al, a la cafetería, se están haciendo bolita, los niños están cuidando unos a otros. Se me hace que no es justo que hace, que pase eso. Entonces necesitamos que por favor nos ayuden, nos apoyen. Todas las personas que están paradas, todas traen un papel escrito de todas las experiencias que han pasado, tanto sus hijos y por los que han oído. Tenemos bastantes personas, necesitamos saber qué más necesitan ustedes para que puedan hacer algo. Poner a una persona que realmente sepa administrar esa escuela, porque la escuela no es mala, los maestros tampoco. Lo vuelvo a repetir. La administración es la que está fallando, y necesitamos por favor que nos apoyen. Gracias.
Gracias, Ms. Quezada.
La escuela es de ser win.
Gracias, Ms. Quezada. Next, we have Bertha Alcantar.
Dr. Espinoza?
I'm Bertha Alcantar. I'll give my time to Leti.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Disculpe.
I'm sorry.
Dr. Espinoza, can we ask that someone collect the stories?
Está bien que lo, recogemos los.
Está bien. Todas traen sus historias.
Okay. Yeah, coge.
También.
Para tener tiempo para leerlos.
También tenemos, las firmas.
Si, si los podemos quedar con esas.
Seguro que sí.
Okay. Ahí se las puede dar al, Mr. Escobar.
Traemos los puntos que se han recolectado, recolectado por los papás mismos, qué son los problemas y en qué está fallando. Entonces sí también, si quieren quedar con ellos, está perfecto, por nosotros no hay ningún problema.
Better information.
Thank you. Apologize for interrupting.
No, 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 no.
Hemos recibido emails, tenemos muchas, muchas cosas. Hoy hubo peleas en la escuela, hubo dos. Una a la hora del lonche, y otra a las 3:15. Me mandaron la grabación de hoy, de las 3:15. Si ustedes gustan verla, yo se salas, se salas facilito con la persona, no sé.
Se las puede, si, 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 si puedes, si se la puede mandar a, Mr. Escobar.
A quién se la manda?
Se la, la puede mandar con él. Ya después ahorita que.
Seguro que sí.
Cabe de hablar.
Es lo que nosotros necesitamos. Varias de las personas se anotaron para ceder los cinco minutos, pero pienso que es suficiente porque ya nos escucharon y sabemos, ahora necesitamos que ustedes nos den algo bueno, que nos alienten, que nos apoyen, y que nos digan, sabes que esto va a cambiar. Porque sabemos que está fuera, se está saliendo de control, se está saliendo, acuérdense, la niña que falleció. Qué más necesitamos? Otra pérdida? Porque si ustedes nos dicen que todo está bien, vamos a creer en ustedes, pero si llega a suceder otra cosa, qué va a pasar? Necesitamos que nos ayuden de verdad, y se los vuelvo a repetir, necesitamos el apoyo. Si quieren más firmas, lo hacemos. Y me imagino que quinientas firmas para juntar, ustedes no saben, tuvimos que tocar y hablar con papás para que ellos pudieran decir, sabes que estamos de acuerdo con ustedes.
We can't engage in the conversation, so thank you for bringing me. Como no, como no están nuestra agenda, no le puedo, si nada, pero sí le vamos a dar a, el director, que le hable a usted, y vamos a ver cómo podemos arreglar esta cosa, en esta escuela.
Si necesitan algo más, ya saben, este, nosotros estamos en el centro comunitario.
No, no, sí sabemos, sí se la agradezco mucho.
Y ahí estamos, hay tres personas, o dos personas más que se anotaron, las cuales iban a hacer los cinco, los cinco minutos. Pero pienso que esto es, es suficiente, y gracias por habernos atendido.
Se la agradezco mucho.
Gracias. Buenas noches.
Buenas noches. We do have next Raúl Pérez, if you would like to talk, or, I mean, Raquel Pérez, I'm disculpe, Raquel Pérez, disculpe. Okay, 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 gracias. Roselia Costa? Okay.
Ronquillo.
Ronquillo. También? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I apologize. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Magdalena Ronquillo, and I'm a parent for SISD, a very proud parent. I just wanted to thank you in advance for the opportunity to express a concern. It was, it's my concern, and I've seen it for years, and then my daughter just kind of brought it all up. At the beginning of the school year, my daughter, who's in college, had not entered, come back to school yet, and she went to, she one of her former elementary teachers. And she stayed in the classroom with her about three hours, just helping around the classroom. And within the span of this time, the teacher had to deal with a student with a nosebleed, a student who didn't make it to the restroom, and another one with a potential case of pink eye. My daughter couldn't comprehend how her teacher could go through this on a daily basis, all on her own. It just boggled her mind, and she felt so much empathy for this teacher and all those teachers that go through this day in and day out. How does one person deal with twenty kids all under the age of six? How? Those of us fortunate enough to have children know the challenge it can be to deal with two or three kids at a time. Now imagine a roomful at once, all the same age. When I first came to the United States, I started in the second grade. I did not speak a word of English, but fortunately for me, my teacher, Mrs. Avila, had an assistant, Mrs. Gonzales. Mrs. Gonzales spent her time teaching me new words, colors, numbers, all with flashcards. She also taught me correct pronunciation and classroom procedures. She put in the time for me. I learned so much from her. The time and effort that Mrs. Gonzales invested in me had a great impact on my success thereafter. My reading and vocabulary greatly improved and just kept getting better. By the fifth grade, I was in the top reading class of my school. I was always very involved in school and was fortunate enough to graduate in the top ten percent of my class, and went on to get a bachelor's degree. My two younger brothers also had teachers with assistants and similar situations. Both of them also attended college, and one of them is a college professor. I strongly believe that if it had not been for Mrs. Gonzales and all the other assistants, perhaps my brothers and I would not have been able to achieve all that we did. I have a sister-in-law who's a kindergarten teacher, and she has an assistant in her classroom, from the first day of class to the last day of the school year. She's very grateful to have someone in the classroom that can help with those children that need that extra time and attention. This way, all the children get a fair chance at success. Adding assistance to those teachers in pre-K, in kindergarten, first grade, and even second grade is a win-win situation all around. This is a very critical age. The teachers will have the much-needed help, the students will receive the extra attention they need, and the district will see improvements in scores, grades, graduation rates, and ultimately growing numbers of college-bound students. So let's start from the beginning and invest in the future of our children, and keep in mind that anything meant to stand needs a stable and very strong foundation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We'll go down to item number eight, Public Hearing. Annual Performance Report for TAPR 2015-2016 and Public Hearing. Ms. Zapata Farmer.
Hi, good evening, President Gandara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the Board and the general public. My name is Alyssa Zapata Farmer, and I'm the Chief Academic Officer, and tonight we are holding a public hearing for our, of our annual performance for the 2015-2016 school year in accordance with Board Policies AIB Legal and BR Legal. Notice of the public hearing has been posted in the El Paso Times and also posted on our SISD website. Tonight's presentation focuses on the main component of the full report, which was provided to you under a separate cover. The public hearing is required under the Texas Education Code, Chapter 39, which requires us to make the report public. So our academic performance report contains six elements, the Texas Academic Performance Report, which is the taper, a PIMS Financial Standards Report, a Campus Performance Objectives, a Report of Student Enrollment in Post-Secondary Institutions, a Report on Violent or Criminal Incidents, and Information Regarding School Violence Prevention and Intervention. In our taper report, which is usually released around November, December, it includes information for the 2016 school year and the 2015 school year. And this data includes our STAR results, attendance rates, dropout rates, graduation rates, advanced completion and dual enrollment completion, and college-ready graduates, as well as our student and staff profile. So during this presentation, we will show how SISD students performed on the STAR assessment for 1516 in all core academic areas. And as you can see, SISD outperforms the state and region in all areas of the STAR. More closely, this next slide shows that grade-level reading STAR performance. As we analyze our data, we continue to place an emphasis on our instructional practices, K-12, which is leading to the student gains that we are seeing. In our math performance, as you can see, in grades three through eight, again, we are above, our student score above the state and the region. In Algebra I, we are above the state, we're one point below the region. But back in our writing performance, again, grades four and seven, our students are scoring both above the state and the region. In science, in grades five through eight, five and eight, apologize, our students perform above the state and region. And in biology, we are performing at the same level as the region, and we're one point below the state. So we continually monitor our practices in the area of our secondary instruction for Social studies, again, our students are performing above both state and region in both Grade Eight and our U.S. History End of Course Exam. So the next part of the report is our attendance rate for the 1415 school year, and as you can see, Socorro ISD, our students are here ninety-six point three percent, that was the report, which is above the state and the region. And then our next slide shows the annual dropout rate, which for grades seven and eight, we are only at point one percent, which is well below the state and region, as well as in grades nine through twelve, at one point five percent, again, where the state and region were above two percent. So this next slide looks at a four-year longitudinal rate, and this is a slide that shows our graduates, which we had in the class of 2015, eighty-nine point five percent of our students graduated with their cohort, point eight percent received their GED, and five point one percent were continuers in the high school. Now, the dropout rate is the rate of students within this cohort that dropped out at any time during those four years. And again, as you can see, Socorro ISD is only at four point six percent. And so while we are proud of our numbers and proud of our results, we are still working to ensure that all of our students graduate on time. This next slide shows the 2014-2015 Advanced Course and Dual Enrollment Completion. Among the college readiness indicators, thirty point, thirty-four point four percent of Socorro ISD students completed and received credit for at least one advanced course in grades nine through twelve, including dual enrollment courses. This is one area that we're constantly working on because we want to give our students these This next slide is our college-ready graduates class of 2015. As you can see, forty percent of our students were considered college-ready in the English Language Arch area, thirty-two percent were college-ready in math, and for both subjects, we had twenty-six percent that were college-ready. So the definition of a college-ready graduate, it's the percentage of graduates that meet or exceed the college-ready criteria on the Texas Success Initiative Assessment, SAT or ACT. The next part of our taper report includes our student information. And for the 1516 school year, we had an enrollment of forty-five thousand one hundred twenty-six students in our district. Out of those, seventy point nine were economically disadvantaged, forty-five point seven were at-risk, and then of course, we had eighteen point eight percent that were receiving bilingual and ESL education, five point five percent gifted and talented, and eight point four percent that were special education. And then of course, our CTE, which had thirty-three point three percent. For the teacher profile, as you can see, thirty point seven percent of our teachers have. have master's degree. And when you compare them with the state, the state is at twenty-three point six percent. So we have a large number of teachers who have their master's degree. And again, we have teachers, the teacher profile broken down also by program. One note of interest at the bottom is the turnover rate for teachers. In Socorro ISD, it is only eight point nine percent, which compared to the state, the state is at sixteen point five percent. This next slide shows our operating expenditures for 1415. And some of the programs included in this are our regular education programs, gifted and talented, career and technical, accelerated education, our Title I school-wide and compensatory education, high school allotment, and pre-kindergarten, among others. This slide, excuse me, this slide shows a comparison of how we use our expenditures versus the state. In Part Three, you have the campus performance objectives. With this particular part of the report, you have all campuses and it shows the SIS, their goal two of their district improvement, or their campus improvement plan, I apologize. That part, goal two, is where SISD students will receive a quality education with rigorous instructional standards that will adequately prepare them for the college and career of their choice. And in your booklet, it has every school listed and it has goal two for every school as well as the district. So this next piece shows our high school graduates' enrollment and academic performance following high school graduation. And in this part, these next two slides, it's a sample of that Texas statute requires every school district to include with their performance report. The information received under Texas Education Code fifty-one point four zero three E. This information provided to districts from the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board reports on student performance in post-secondary institutions during the first year enrolled after graduation from high school. Student performance is measured by the grade-point average earned by the thirteen, fourteen graduates who attended a public four-year university or a two-year public college or independent colleges and universities. So this slide shows Americas, Eastlake, and Eldorado, and the following shows Mission Early, Montwood, and Socorro High School. And finally, as we're coming to the end of this report, as you can see, these numbers are very small. This is our student criminal incident summary report for 1516. We had a total of five hundred and forty-seven incidents in our schools last year. However, the top three were fighting, mutual combat, possession of controlled substance, and cigarette and tobacco products. It's important to note that as we looked at these numbers compared to last year's numbers, we are down in the possession controlled substance. In last year's report, we were at two hundred and forty-three, this year we're at one hundred and seventy-two, and in our cigarette tobacco products, we're down from thirty-seven to thirty, which shows progress. And then our final slide summarizes Part Six of the District Annual Report, which are the programs and presentations coordinated in the district and the schools by teachers, counselors, police officers, administrators, volunteers and/or students, and the Department of State and Federal Programs in order to assist in the prevention of violence and drug abuse. While there are over thirty programs listed here, they include such programs such as conflict resolution, Career Day programs, and the Olvejas Bullying Prevention Program. So we have several here, and those are just a few that highlight. And so in conclusion, at this time, this is a hearing and the board is required to solicit public input on the annual performance report.
It is a, it is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to speak on behalf of this issue, please come to the podium and say your name and go ahead and speak.
Don't rush.
Please, don't rush. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and thank you. This full report will be posted on the district website and copies will also be made available at the district offices and for public members upon request through our Public Relations Office. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farman. Let's go down to item number nine.
Mr. Gondra, if I may. You know, I feel this big with the recognition you guys gave me today. Everything that is happening in this district comes out of the students, their families, the administration, the teachers, every stakeholder in this community has pushed us to get that success. And Dr. Espinoza, I really thank you for the job you have done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else think to say anything? Okay, let's go down to item number nine, Facilities Report, Mr.
Good evening, President Gondra, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. My report begins on page twelve. It has to do with the three projects that we currently have going on that I, that I will be reporting on tonight. The aquatic center upgrade, we're still, you know, doing all the exterior work, working on the exterior pool, the plastering of that pool, the new play structure, and repairing a lot of the damaged steps and plasters. I think on the lower right-hand, my right-hand corner is some steps that go in from the indoor pool and you step down to the play, to the lower pool. We're repairing those steps because they have deteriorated over the years and breaking off, so we're in the process of repairing those. And then the upper slide shows that the play structure, the tower, and everything is being worked on. We are anticipating the play structure this week sometime or the, around January, well, it should have already been here on the ninth, and we're, will be working to install that if it has not already been installed. The project is coming along, we're still working with some issues of some, changing out some existing valves and stuff that have corroded over the twenty-some, something years that the pool has been in existence. We're doing that through cost savings of this particular project.
Mr. Aynton.
Yes, sir.
Will this be done by summertime?
We're, yeah, the goal is to have it done for.
I'm just making sure because I really want to go down that slide. I've never done it, and I'm doing it this summer.
Okay. Yes, in fact, Ms. Macias is scheduling field, you know, the schools, a lot of the schools use that towards the end of the year in May as their, you know, field trips and stuff, so we promised to have it, the exterior pool ready, and then we're going to start on the interior when we get the green light.
Board workshop, anyone?
Yes. Okay. Next project is Socorro High School, the HVAC that the board approved a couple of months ago. We are proceeding with the renovations of the areas in the administration library and the corridor areas. We're working with the engineer and to start that design, and our anticipation is to get that out as soon as possible and have it's up and running, hopefully by the start of school year next year or this August on the HVAC upgrade. And our last project, of course, is the new elementary school. We're working with the architects to coordinate some meeting. In fact, a week from today, there are going to be a, what we call an all-day charrette, an all-day meeting where we invite certain individuals, special ed, fine arts, athletics, child nutrition, libraries, et cetera, into the conference room outside of my office. And we have meetings there all day going over curriculum-type issues that we want to see in the new elementary school. Of course, this school is going to be designed based on a prototypical design on Purple Heart, so that's our go-by. But we want to tweak that plan a little bit because there are some things that Ms. Parker has seen already in her school, like I have to go there, or my department has to go over there and put in a door that we, you know, needed in to get into one of her areas off of the corridors, and it makes sense that we do that. So we're tweaking everything that we do when we go out for new buildings and stuff. Ms. Chavez is also going to be involved in that since she's in the other relatively new school at James Butler. Those are the two administrators that we'll be working with. And like I said, all the other departments, we'll be talking curriculum-type things next Tuesday all day long. And then we'll get into the nuts and bolts and bring in the various departments, a lot of my department, the operation ends of it, plumbing, mechanical, electrical, and get their input as we go on. Looking ahead, we, of course, need a site, and we're working on that, and we're dealing with, Mr. Blanco and myself have met with a real estate broker, and we'll be bringing that to you here shortly for consideration. And then last Friday, I believe, the CMAT Risk went out for proposal, and we'll be bringing that back to the board once we receive those. And I believe we received those at the end of the month, or first of February. We will not be able to bring it to the February board meeting because I think we just won't have time to analyze it all. So we'll be talking to Dr. Espinoza and hopefully have a special board meeting right around the first of March, hopefully. But we'll coordinate that with Dr. Espinoza's schedule and, of course, y'all's schedule. And that basically concludes my presentation. I'll answer any questions.
Any questions from Aynton? No. Thank you, Ms. Aynton.
Thank you.
Let's go to Item B, Grant Reports. Ms. Darnell.
Okay. Good evening, President Gondra, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. For tonight's grant report, our continuing grants, all of our DODA grants are combining to bring in a guest speaker, a motivational speaker, and I think we're looking at April with the goal to be to strengthen community-school partnerships. Also, individually, we just completed our program audit for our Army Youth Program, After-School Program, and we are going to begin working seriously at getting our attendance up. We found our attendance has been low at the beginning of this year. Special education focus grant, we've received iPads, laptops, books, all kinds of things that are being distributed to the campuses. Our creating positive change grant there, we have just hired a new DODA military liaison to head up that grant for us. And our KELOG grant, we have revised our implementation plan and are working on scheduling for parent meetings and college excursions. Applications awarded, this, last month, we were awarded, and Americas, Americas High School was awarded a Hatton Sumner's Foundation fifteen thousand dollar scholarship for their Libertas Academy Spring Civics Institute. We got our first check from the Impact Aid Department of A, Department of Education for last year for three hundred and sixty-three thousand. That was at sixty percent, so if we're funded at eighty percent, it looks like we're going to get about four hundred and eighty-five thousand this year. Eldorado High School Robotics received a seven hundred and twenty-five dollar grant from First Robotics Competition. Applications not awarded, this past month, we did not receive either our Purple Heart or Paso del Norte from the Fort Bliss Spouses Association. We still have two small school grants awaiting notification, as well as our JETS equipment grant and our upward bound program. And then our application progress, in progress, the end of this month, the thirty-first of January, we have to get in this year's Impact Aid. And the other one that is still actually in research is a truancy prevention and intervention program grant, and that grant will be looking at juvenile case managers where, where they are supporting truancy as a civil versus a criminal offense. Okay. Are there any questions?
Any questions from Ms. Darnell? Ms. Darnell, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Technology Update, Mr. Rena.
Good evening, President Gondra, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board.
He got that right.
Today's update, a little bit over a year ago, we, the board awarded a bid to upgrade our phone system. We had two options at that time, either we upgrade the phone system or we buy a new system, and we decided to buy a new system. The system cost over, a little bit over two million dollars. We financed it for four years and we got the savings from the maintenance contract that we do every year, that we used to do every year, which is around two hundred thousand dollars, and then we decided to do the work ourselves, which saved half a million dollars. The reason we, we wanted to upgrade the phone system again is because it was an aging system, it's been here since day one, over twenty years ago. The new phone system allows us to control the phone system from one location, which is centralized location. It also integrated with our current system that we have here in our network. And also, one of the other abilities that has a capability is it allows us to make 911 calls and it goes directly into the room where it's, the room is at. That's why we ask teachers, don't move the phone because if you dial 911, then they go to the room where the room is assigned. The system is quite big. El Paso has eight campuses that has a voice or IP telephone system. The city of El Paso implemented two thousand phones, El Paso Community College implemented two thousand phones, and our system that we awarded was sixty-five hundred phones. We are currently at four thousand phones. We expect to complete in the next couple of months. These are the campuses and locations that are completed. Administrators get a different phone besides the teacher's phone, the other one on the bottom. The current campuses are the ones, or locations are the ones that are left. If it says in progress, that means that we did probably all the cabling work and they're getting ready to do the phone installations there. The other ones, they probably have to go and plan and see if it needs any cabling, and then we install the phones. Any, any questions?
Any questions? Are you sure? Anybody? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Let's go down to item number ten, Consent Agenda. Is there any items that need to be pulled?
Mr. Gondra, F1.
F1?
Yes, sir.
Any others? Need a motion?
Motion to approve excluding item F1.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Nahira, seconded by Mrs. Nahira. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries F1. Mr. Ayut?
Mr. Blanco with an update.
Thank you. For President Gondra, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board, I asked Mr. Ayut to remove this from consent. It's the renewal of lease agreement that the district has had in place with the Freight Exchange of North America Freight and Trucking Company. We've had the lease in place since 2008. We've been renewing it on regular two-year intervals with an increase in rent. The company has agreed to another renewal, they requested it, and we agreed to a two-year extension. They did ask, after Mr. Aynton and I had our discussions, and I think it was presented to Facilities, and initially recommended for approval, they came back and said, hey, can you basically do us a favor and change the renewal term from a two-year term to an eighteen-month term with an option at the end of the eighteen months for them to then renew it into a new two-year lease? And the reason being is that that same facility, they run their offices out of modular space portable buildings that are also leased. And so the administration, from the company, would like to be able to renew that physical location, all the modular units, and the land at the same time. They don't intend to leave. They sent us communications to that effect. They've agreed to the increase in the rent, which would go... to that effect. They've agreed to the increase in the rent, which would go to ten thousand five hundred dollars per month. It's a five hundred dollar increase over the prior year, and what they would do at the end of the eighteen-month period is exercise the option for a two-year lease. So, you'd go eighteen months this term instead of two years, and then you roll into two-year terms. Obviously, the same terms and conditions of the original lease would apply, and if there's some reason to terminate early in favor of the district, we can exercise that, and the same thing for the less or client company, but they're not saying that they want to. They just want to coordinate their lease times. So, we're asking that you authorize us to complete the amendment to the lease with the only change from what was originally presented to facilities being, instead of a two-year term, it being an eighteen-month term with a six-month option to renew.
Motion to approve the new lease for eighteen months with an option for two years to renew.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Ayub, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. Any further discussion?
Question.
Mr. Nahara.
Mr. Blanco, it is an eighteen-month lease with a two-year option to renew, right?
A six-month option to renew into a two-year term. You're on two-year terms right now, and we had agreed, and they had agreed to renew it with another rolling forward two-year term. So, that term would have been from February 1, 2017, through January 31 of 2019, rolling two-year term. At that point in January, they have an option to renew another two years. They said, well, let's end it at eighteen months and give us our option there so that we can coordinate it with our other leases. So, it's just going to push it back six months, and then it'll be another two-month, two-year lease.
Okay. Yeah, I understand what...
It's their request.
Yeah, I understand what they're trying to do. It's just that you started with eighteen months with a two-year renewal option, and then you ended with eighteen months with a six-month renewal option, so I was confused.
I apologize. It is an eighteen-month lease with a six-month window for them to renew it for a two-year period.
Now, I'm with you. There we go. Okay.
Any other further discussion?
No, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's go down to item number eleven, new business. Consider approval resolution to repeal A-F public school rating system. Ms. Zapata Farmer.
Yes. Good evening, President Gondra, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the board. I'm here to present a resolution for your consideration, which is concerning the A through F accountability rating system for Texas public schools. Whereas, the Texas Legislature has enacted legislation that requires the Commissioner of Education to implement a public school rating system that would assign A through F grades to schools and districts beginning with the 2017-18 school year, and whereas at least sixteen states have implemented a similar rating system utilizing A through F grades for schools and districts, and to date, there is no definitive research that suggests these ratings have improved student or school performance, and whereas in a recent statewide survey conducted by the State Board of Education, an overwhelming majority of Texans do not want high stakes standardized test scores to serve as the primary basis for a public school rating system, and where the majority, fifty-five percent, of the A through F grades are based on the State of Texas Assessment of Academic Readiness, the STAR, a high-stakes standardized test that does not accurately measure student learning, and whereas the STAR provides little meaningful information to guide student learning, inform teachers, or report academic progress to parents, and whereas the Commissioner's proposed rating system utilizing A through F grades for schools and districts include five domains and numerous unrelated indicators to determine a single grade, leaving the public with an invalid disconnected reflection of school quality, and whereas the Commissioner's proposed rating system utilizing A through F grades for schools and districts creates a false impression about students, ignores the unique strengths of each school, and unfairly reduces each student's worth to the school's assigned grade, and whereas we believe in the TNET set out in creating a new vision for public education in Texas from TASA in 2008, and our goal is to transform education in Socorro ISD in accordance with these TNETs, and whereas we embrace meaningful accountability that informs students, parents, and teachers about the learning needs of each student in each school, and whereas we believe our state's future prosperity relies on a high-quality education system that prepares students for colleges and careers, and without such a system, Texas' economic competitiveness and ability to attract new business will falter. Now, therefore be it, resolve that Socorro ISD Board of Trustees calls on the Texas Legislature to repeal the rating system utilizing A through F grades for schools and districts, and develop a community-based accountability system that empowers school districts to design their own internal systems of assessment and accountability that, while meeting general state standards, allows districts to innovate and customize curriculum and instruction to meet the needs and interests of each student and their communities, and be it further, resolve that this new system should reduce the use of high-stakes standardized tests, encompass multiple assessments, reflect greater validity, and more accurately reflect what students know and can do in terms of the rigorous standards. Administration asks for approval of the resolution as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mrs. Nahara, seconded by Mr. Ayub. Any further discussion?
Yes, President Gondra, may I?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'd like to emphasize a few points that was made in the resolution that was read by Ms. Zapata and as being considered by the board. You know, first and foremost, as the Superintendent of SISD, Socorro ISD, I fully embrace meaningful accountability that informs students, parents, and teachers about the learning needs of each student at each and every single school. You know, accountability is one of our strategic directions, and it's very, very important. However, this latest attempt by the state to label our public schools is ill-conceived and will do, in my opinion, more harm than good. And as we heard in the resolution, similar models have been tried and failed across the country. And while I applaud our SISD students for their region-leading performance in Domains One through Three, which rate test scores, progress, and closes the gap, far too much emphasis continues to be put on results from high-stakes testing. You know, our teachers and students invest far more throughout the entire, entire school year than what we can measure on one test on one day of the entire school year. And with our well-documented success here in SISD, we've proven to our community, to the state, to the country that we know our students, we know the burdens that they bear and the struggles that they carry. We know their talents and where they shine. We know their limitations and work tirelessly to fill those gaps. You know, their performance in one snapshot again, high-stakes exam, just cannot fairly or accurately measure their quality or daily success, period. So, I'm confident that despite, despite what the state ends up doing, at the end of the day, the hard work of our teachers and students will continue to lead SISD to be the district of choice for endless opportunities for our entire El Paso community. Thank you.
Mr. Gondra. Mr. Ayub.
I'd like to somewhat echo, certainly when I echo everything Dr. Espinoza said, but I also wanted to lend additional support to this resolution. I feel that the importance of this resolution really echoes to the state the importance of public education. All of the hard work that is being done without us supporting how we want our students educated and tested, and us not to support this type of a resolution really sends a message that it's okay for them to do these types of things for the hard work that our students do, our teachers do, and our administrators. They're working very, very hard, and the state oftentimes, rather than helping us with things that will be helpful, they put more roadblocks and more fences in our ways, and yet we're still successful. I know Socorro will continue to be successful no matter what they do, but I think, based on this accountability system, as we've kind of looked at it for the first run, it's more harmful than it is helpful in us trying to do a better job for the kids in this district. So, I strongly support this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Ayub.
One more thing, President Gondra, and just for the board and the audience's reference, I believe there's been over two hundred districts that already have, probably more, I know probably more than that, that have already passed this resolution across the state of Texas.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Espinoza. Any further discussion? We do have a motion made by Mrs. Nahara, seconded by Mr. Ayub. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Go to item eleven B. Consider approval of FY 2017-2018 budget priorities and calendar. Mr. Ressa.
President Gondra, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board, tonight, the administration is requesting consideration and approval of 2017-18 budget priorities and calendar. These priorities have been submitted for review and input to the various board committees, and we thank you for your thoughtful questions and comments in these meetings. Before you is a listing of the items that will be included in next year's budget, and they are as follows: a commensurate general pay increase for SISD employees, an increase in the district's healthcare contribution for employees of twenty-five dollars per month per employee, budget additional teaching positions for growth at the campuses of up to twenty-five full-time position equivalent positions. It'll also include in the budget additional positions in the campuses or departments as they are needed. We'll also include funding for laptop computers for all incoming freshmen to continue the district's one-to-one digital initiative. We'll also provide funding for the expansion of the WIN Academy by one grade level. We'll also include additional positions for an additional early college high school, as well as funding for textbooks. Also, the funding of partial salaries for the principal and staff of our new elementary school scheduled to be completed in the summer of 2018. We'll also have additional CTE instructional positions to provide students with more opportunities to complete their chosen CTE sequence without having to go to another campus. The priorities also include funding for the third year of the Fine Arts Task Force Initiative. We also including expanding the high school staffing with two additional positions, teaching positions for each comprehensive high school to reduce teacher-student ratio and to provide more individualized instruction and interventions. We'll also provide funding for an initiative to expand the one-to-one laptop initiative into the eighth grade by starting the program at two campuses. We'll also provide additional funding for advanced academics for professional development, dual credit, transportation, and summer school initiatives. We also intend to include, increase the campus allotment by five dollars per student, per enrollment, and also finally, an allotment for furniture replacement. With respect to the calendar, what you see there, we're requesting the approval of this calendar, and I apologize for the small lettering. Nobody brought their binoculars? Anyway, this calendar is very similar to the calendar that was approved by the board last year. I do want to highlight two changes from last year. First of all, the request for additional staff by departments will take place in late January. In the past, it was done around April or March. And secondly, the first budget workshop for the board will be conducted in late March, specifically March the thirtieth. That will be the workshop, that will be Thursday, as our regular board meeting for that month will be held on Tuesday due to intercession. Finally, please keep in mind that this calendar is scheduled to change, subject to any scheduling conflicts that occur during the year. Are there any questions with respect to the priorities or the calendar?
No, sir. Any questions?
I need an approval.
Then motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion made by Mr. Ayub, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you again for your input.
Go down to item C, consider approval of contract for election services. Mr. Blanco.
Thank you, Board President Gondra, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. You have before you tonight the basic contract for the election services for the May election. It's the same basic structure and form that we've used in the past with the county, with an exception to the increase in price. The cost of this election is going to be forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-six cents, and so it's gone up a little bit from prior years. We're asking that you approve the contract for election services, and we will return it to Ms. Wise's office at the County Election Department. And then, the secondary items that will come up after this item on the next section of the agenda are to order the election and prepare the notice calling for the election. So, we recommend that you approve the contract for election services as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion made by Mr. Ayub and seconded by Mr. Nahara. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's go down to item D, consider approval of order and notice of election for May 6, 2017, Board of Trustees election. Mr. Blanco.
Thank you. We've now approved the contract for election services, and what you have before you now is the notice that will be issued to the public and also to the County Elections Administrator and the order calling for the election. It's a legal requirement that the district order the election and also send notice. The deadline to do so is February seventeenth of 2017, but because of our board calendar schedule, we're bringing it to you in January, you might normally get it in February, but we need to do it now. We were lucky enough to have Ms. Lujan, I don't think she is here. I wanted to thank her. She really pushed the County Elections Office to make sure they got us the information and the required data to prepare the notice and the order. She's put it together, done a great job on it, so we're recommending that you approve the notice and order calling for the election as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Nahara, seconded by Mr. Ayub. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Let's go down to item E. Discussion and possible action regarding a resolution to support the Law School Initiative and Establishment of the Albert Armandades School of Long El Paso, Texas. And it's me. Okay. We do have Mr. Ray Mansera, past National Vice President for LULAC for the Southwest Region, who would like to speak on this issue, if that's okay? Is that okay with everybody up here?
Thank you. Mr. President Gondra, thank you so much for putting this item on the agenda. Distinguished members of the Board of Trustees for Socorro ISD, and also Superintendent Dr. Espinoza, thank you for allowing us to speak to the board and to the community on the following important matter, that we are trying to do something very, very exciting for El Paso. We have the LULAC, as you know, has been, was founded in nineteen twenty-nine, and we have always been fighting to bring equality and every Hispanic American in the United States to have equal access to all those opportunities that this great country offers, and one of them is education. And I wanted to let you know that even though I'm going to give you some very unusual news in the beginning, it's going to turn out to be more of a positive at the end. I do want to say for the record that in nineteen ninety-two, we filed, LULAC filed suit against the state of Texas called LULAC versus Richards for systematically discriminating against Mexican-Americans along the Texas-Mexico border. That resulted in a federal court ruling that indeed Texas had failed Mexican-Americans in Texas in higher education monies. They had, everything had gone north, not along the border. Well, the state of Texas did appeal, and the Court of Appeals ruled in favor of the plaintiff, which is LULAC, and they upheld the decision of the lower court. Why do I mention that? Because the information I'm going to leave behind with your assistant with staff is that in 2014, UT El Paso recognized LULAC, along with eighty-six other organizations or individuals, that have made UTEP what it is today. And Dr. Antaly, who specifically mentioned that lawsuit, that as a result of that lawsuit, LULAC, I'm sorry, UT El Paso went from one PhD program from nineteen fourteen to nineteen ninety-two, and for the first time, they had... for the first time, they had, they received their second PhD program. Now, at UT El Paso, we have 21 PhD programs. And so, we were very proud of that recognition. Also, I want to let you all know that even though this initiative that, that LULAC started back in May, and we went all the way to the National Board to bring a law school to El Paso, that LULAC sponsored it, we have turned it over to the community. It is not a LULAC initiative. It is now called the El Paso Law School Initiative. Belongs to you, belongs to the children, it belongs with parents, it belongs to everybody. So we are delighted to stand before you and receive this type of support for our law school. There are very, many people involved in the initiative, but I would just like to mention a few for the record. We do have Attorney Albert Armandades Jr., the son of Judge Albert Armandades Sr., whom the federal courthouse is named after. He was National LULAC President in 1954, and he is one of our members of the initiative. Also, we have District Judge Marcos Lizarraga, very heavily involved with our initiative, Judge Victor Salas, Judge Max Muñoz, Attorney Laura Enriquez, past president of the El Paso Bar Association, MABA, and also Attorney Janet Monteros, the Executive Director of the League of Women Voters. We have also Attorney Danny Anchondo, Attorney Steve Fisher, Attorney Abby Bernal, Attorney Rebecca Bustamante. All of these folks are involved with the initiative. I'd like to also say that as far as the resolutions, we do have the support across the city of El Paso and the county. We did receive a resolution from the City of El Paso, authorized by the mayor, to sign any and all documents pertaining to bringing the law school to El Paso. We also received, two weeks ago, the resolution from El Paso ISD in support of this. And we are, we are, we also received last week, Canotillo ISD, and we stand before you for Socorro ISD. Tomorrow, we will receive the resolution from Isleta ISD, and we're scheduled also to go before El Paso Community College and receive their resolution. So I'd just like to conclude by saying that I brought copies of the actual resolution from the City of El Paso, signed by the mayor of El Paso, and a copy of the information that is very critical about the number of law schools in Texas. There are 10. For our private, six are public, and all of them are north of Texas. Some even have three schools, such as Houston, Dallas has two, Fort Worth has one, Lubbock has one. So you look at El Paso, that we are the sixth-largest city in Texas, yet we are the only one without a law school. We are, I brought that information because it's very good information. As far as the number of, of attorneys, people have said, "We have too many attorneys. Why do you want to bring a law school?" Well, what happens is that out of the 10 metroplexes in Texas, we are number, we are number nine in the number of attorneys per capita. Number nine out of 10. We have one attorney for every 656 people, whereas Austin has one for every 170 persons. Just wanted to let you know, because that is interesting data when people say that we have too many attorneys. We are very happy to inform you that the, our Senator, Jose Rodriguez, has filed the actual bill in the House, Senate Bill 437, to salvage and bring a law school to El Paso. And our junior, junior member of the delegation, Lena Ortega, an attorney herself, filed House Bill Resolution 841, and they are here, and we hope that the legislature will be, will sit fit to, to agree. And lastly, we have a petition that we are passing around, and I'd like to leave it with you all, and ask that you all sign the petition, and anybody who wishes to sign the petition, because we expect to have 100,000 signatures sent to the legislature, so that they can see that the support is there. Mr. President, we all know that a law school is needed in El Paso. We are very happy that we now have a dental school. We have a pharmacy school, a PhD. We also have a, a school of nursing. We have a medical school. And the last thing that we need is a law school. It will bring so much prestige to El Paso. And we also have the location of the law school. We have already sent the letters to Senator John Cornyn in the Senate, and Beto O'Rourke in the House, to give the old federal courthouse $25 million piece of property to the El Paso Law School Initiative, so that it will be established right across the street from the county courthouse, from the jail, and the new federal courthouse. So as you can see, there's a lot of work before, before us, but no, but we are here today to ask the support of all the students and parents of Socorro ISD through your action in support of this resolution. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mansera. Mr. Nakada.
Mr. Mansera, I just want to say, thank you very much for, for bringing this forward and for supporting this initiative. I believe in a strong public school system, and, you know, we at the Americas High School have our Libertas Academy. We also believe in endless opportunities here at Socorro. And, I mean, to hear you talk about the potential, the reality of a law school here in El Paso, I can just imagine, one of our graduates from Americas High School in the Libertas Academy, then attending and graduating from the law school here in El Paso, that would be awesome.
That is what we expect, and it's a sad day, has been a sad story year after year, when our children, our sisters, our brothers, have to leave El Paso to go to law school to other cities, whereas other cities, they don't have to suffer that family loss. Not only that, but also the cost to go to law school outside of your city is compounded for El Pasosans and not other major cities. That's why we want to finally put an end to that and say, "If you want to go to law school, it's right here. You can do it." Thank you so much.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Mr. Blanco, do we have to read the resolution?
No.
Okay. Well, no. We do have a motion made by Mr. Ayub, seconded by Mr. Nakada. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Mansera. So now, let's go down to item 12, executive session. This meeting is to be closed for discussion with legal counsel regarding status of El Guerra versus Socorro ISD, to discuss personal and real estate matters, to consider administrative recommendations for principal at O'Shea Callahan Elementary School, and licensed specialist in school psychology, and to hear Superintendent's mid-cycle former evaluation update under Texas Government Code Section 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074. The time is 7:59. We'll call this meeting back to order. It is 9:03. Item 13, new business, consider approval, administrative recommendations. Dr. Espinoza.
Yes.
Number one, Principal O'Shea Callahan.
Yes, President Gondra, members of the board, at this time, administration is pulling this item from the agenda.
Let's go down to item two, licensed specialist in school, in school psychology.
Yes, President Gondra, members of the board, at this time, administration recommends Mr. Arturo Oaxa, Oaxaca, to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as a licensed specialist in school psychology.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Ayub, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are you sure we can stay a little bit longer? There's no more agenda items. This meeting is now over at 9:04.